To order at 6:30. And Paul, you're on first, reading the stuff.
In accordance with the governor's orders of spending certain provisions of the open meeting law, relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the February 9th, 2021 public meeting of the planning board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. One, the meeting will be televised via Falmouth Community Television. Two, real-time public comment can be addressed to the planning board utilizing Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the chat function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate time in the meeting. Zoom login instructions. Instructions for the meeting link for this specific meeting can be found at the following web address. Please allow 10 to 15 minutes of preparation time to log in, though maybe though it may be less if you have previously used Zoom on the device you will use to access the meeting. Additionally, public comment may be sent in advance of the meeting to planning@falmouthma.gov at least five hours prior to the beginning of the meeting. Documents and audio or video files may be submitted via email. Submitted email comments and documents will make part of the meeting record and may be read into the record, summarized or displayed during the meeting at discretion of the chair. Four applicants or representatives and individuals with enforcement matters before the planning board may appear remotely and not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters before the planning board may contact the planning department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if unable to use the Zoom virtual meeting software. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations should be submitted in advance of the meeting to planning@falmouthma.gov, so they may be displayed for remote public access viewing.
Thank you, Paul. And then the minutes of January 26th.
I've not seen the minutes of February 26th yet. I defer.
Okay, so we're going to postpone those. Yep. Okay. First on our agenda is an approval not required. The applicant is Philip Rubiza. Plan of land to divide one parcel into three lots located at 46 Sandwich Road. We all had this in our packet. I don't know if there's anybody here to represent. Tom, you are going to. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. We do actually have the petitioner here, but they are representing themselves. So if I may, I'm just going to do a quick screen share
Of course.
of the plan. Easy for me to say. Does that look like an A and R plan on your screen?
It does. It looks like the one in our packet.
Okay, swell. So this is a Sandwich Road. It is a public way. All the lots have frontage on a way. And the shape of the lots are the shape of the lots as are permitted under Falmouth zoning bylaw. An A and R plan is subject to endorsement of the board if there is frontage on a public way. And the frontage is not illusory. So here we see 100 foot of frontage on this lot, 100 foot of frontage on this lot, and 100 foot of frontage on this lot. And the lots. You need it to be at the front, wide at the rear. The board's endorsement is based upon the frontage on a way. It's appropriate for endorsement. The board feels that way.
Are there any questions to Tom? Okay, seeing none. Oh, Bob.
I'll move to, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I move to endorse the Rubisa plan of land to divide one parcel into three lots located at 46 Sandwich Road without regard to buildability.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. And I'm going to assume unless I see a hand floating around out there that nobody has any questions after this. Okay, please show your hand if you approve. Okay, that's seven out of seven. Thank you. Moving on to planning board decision. Applicant Sun Elite LLC special permit application to extend a special permit decision issued December 8, 2004 to Albert Shamsi, trustee, as extended by decision issued January 23, 2019, which allowed a density bonus of two lots, lots nine and 10 on Pam's Way, for an additional three years commencing on January 23, 2021. And we do have a motion here in front of us, but we also have a number of letters that are in opposition. And we got something from Mr. Amen and it was transmission of Mr. McGrath's records on the septic system, the fast septic system there. So has everybody had a chance to see all of the sendings? The letters and Bob Amet's letter? Is there anyone who has not had a chance to read that? Charlotte, you have not, right? Oh, you're muted, Charlotte.
I have not. If it just came, if it's the one that we had before, yes.
No, it came at about 1:00 this afternoon. And truth is, I really haven't had a chance to really thoroughly study it because I had other things I had to do this afternoon. So having said all of that, Michaela, you're taking the lead on this one or no?
Yes, I'm happy to take the lead on this one. But yes, we did receive some letters from a butters regarding the motion and regarding the case. I'm happy to read those letters if the board would like, or if you guys have already read them and addressed them. We can just talk about that.
Jim?
These letters are fresh in, but they're the same letters we read the last time. It's the exact same people with the exact same opposition. They are butters, and it affects them differently than it does the rest of the town.
Mr. Kramer gave a lot more detail this time than he had previously. I will put that in as well. I did get to see those letters and read them. Does anybody have any questions? Charlotte?
Does Mr. Amen's letter, which I haven't seen, address any of the butters' concerns about the engineering and the sewage?
No, other than it had, let's see, I've got to find it here. There it is. The Erickson's, it says, there's nothing new. The arguments raised by these butters are not new. The Erickson's home on Crow Road is directly behind lots nine and 10, though separated by a strip of the Sunrise Estates open space. The Ericksons repeat their misstatement that the developer has not fulfilled his obligation. The developer's obligation is to pay $200,000 per lot for affordable housing when and if the lots are sold. The developer created the additional lots in good faith at considerable expense. It has not been possible to sell the lots for an amount sufficient, excuse me, sufficient to pay the affordable housing payment and other expenses of sale even without covering any of the extra expense to create the lots. During the last two years, the developer made considerable effort working with the Falmouth Housing Trust to adjust the terms. Under current relatively recent conditions, the developer may be able to sell the lots and make the affordable housing payment. Some adjustments may still be necessary. First, the extension is needed. Stephen Kramer's letter is speculative, unspecific, and unsubstantiated. Submitted here with is today's updated letter from Holmes and McGrath, and in perens, Tim Santos, P E, and Louis Coelho, certified wastewater treatment operator, end perens, stating that the system has been regularly inspected, that repairs have been performed as needed, and that the system's performance has improved, that the additional houses will not adversely affect the shared system, but that conversely, the addition of flows from the two lots will improve the performance of the system. The state sanitary code Title V states at FWR 15.003 in perens 1, generally full compliance with the provisions of 310 CMR 15.000 is presumed by the department M A D E P to be protective of the public health, safety, welfare, and environment. The common denitrification septic system conforms to Title V and local health regulations. So that's Mr. Amen's letter to us. And I read the whole thing because the people who are listening obviously have not seen it or heard it. What I have not been able to do is go over in detail Mr. McGrath's letter to the board with a lot of details. Does it, Jim?
Mr. Kramer is making a lot of noise on chat. I think we should, although I disagree, but I think we probably should let him say what he wants to say, so everything's clear.
Maybe. I think we've had it.
It's up to you, but he's.
I haven't been watching that because I've been reading, okay?
But it's the same as his letter. He's just, his position is, his letter's new. It's different, and it's more important, but in my opinion, it's the exact same thing he said the last time.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah, I think the technical issue of the wastewater has been addressed. The only question I have is, we've extended this, now we're going to extend it to three years. And I just wonder why it's not two years rather than three years at this time?
Well, we had agreed that that was going to be part of the discussion. In front of us, a motion. And that motion, we can amend. We can amend it to one year, two years, or leave it at the three years as it was written. Or, as you know, we can vote not to do this. Charlotte?
I'm looking at Mr. Kramer's comments in the chat. And I actually agree with his second comment in which he said that his letter provides significant detail that is factual, not speculative. And Mr. Amen has provided no technical rebuttal of my letter. And it was the technical rebuttal that I asked actually to hear. Have the town engineers been out there to literally sniff around and see what's going on? Is this something they would approve? You know, now that the legislature has made it so much easier for town meeting to approve higher density around, the individual low-income housing lots become much less important so that we could really take into consideration the runoff into Born's Pond, the additional burden on the sewage system there at that development, the harm to the land. We don't need to place low-income housing way above everything else anymore now that it's easier to provide it in the town.
Mr. Kramer says, even if the system is maintained as required, the facts of my letter remain applicable. Tom?
If I may, it's probably not a bad idea for Michaela, who is quite prepared to summarize Mr. Kramer's letter for us. If his letter's been part of the record and someone else has a record that says, you know, I dispute those things, I think it's probably appropriate to, as the agenda allows with the board's agreement to basically highlight the points Mr. Kramer points out in his letter. I will say that we are not talking about the merits of the development itself at this point, just extending the time to execute the original special permit decision, whether that be one year, two years, or three years. But given the comments and the time Mr. Kramer's taken to write his letter and his comments in the chat, if it suits the board, I think it's appropriate for Michaela to highlight those points since his letter has been referred to specifically during the course of the meeting.
And I do agree with you, Tom. It is a very detailed letter. The rest of the board has no problem with that, do they?
None.
Okay, Michaela, would you?
Yep, so I will, I'll try and summarize the letter. So, Dear Madam Chair and members of the planning board, the purpose of the letter is to provide the board with information that is very important to the board's deliberation and decision relative to the subject matter. In summary, the septic system serving the Sunrise Estates presents significant pollution and health risks, which will increase if the board extends the Sun Elite special permit. Extending the special permit would facilitate adding two more homes to the system, which would increase the risk of contamination of the drinking water in private water wells serving neighboring property owners, contribute to the nitrogen load on nearby Born's Pond, which is of concern to the town, and be contrary to the intent of state environmental regulations. Accordingly, in light of these significant concerns and related circumstances, the permit should not be extended. Additional information supporting this conclusion is provided below. There will be impacts to private wells and properties. So domestic sewage contains many contaminants. Even well-maintained nitrogen-reducing systems typically reduce the nitrogen load and do not significantly reduce other contamination. Sunrise Estates septic system injects sewage effluent into the ground in a concentrated fashion in close proximity to at least four private water wells used by neighboring property owners for their drinking water and other domestic purposes. Excuse me, I'm trying to summarize this a little bit. It is normal and inevitable for septic systems, even nitrogen-reducing systems that meet regulatory standards to discharge potentially poisonous contamination into the groundwater beneath and down gradient from the system. By its very nature, the multi-home Sunrise Estates system positioned next to the property lines with Crow Road neighbors emits significant nitrogen and other contaminants into the off-site groundwater. Another factor that the butter mentions is impact to Born's Pond. Similar to other tidal and freshwater bodies in Falmouth, the water quality of Born's Pond is being adversely impacted by excess nitrogen caused by septic systems, use of nitrogen containing fertilizers and other sources within the pond's watershed. The town is planning to implement a widening of the pond inlet to improve tidal flushing and corresponding nitrogen reduction at significant expense. The Sunrise Estates septic system is within the Born's Pond watershed. Next is regulatory issue. According to Mass. Title V, Section 15.303, any system shall be upgraded upon the order of the department or the local approving authority if either determines that a specific circumstance exists by which any system threatens public health, safety, welfare, or the environment, causes or threatens to cause damage to property or creates a nuisance. It's clearly the intent of state law that septic systems not be allowed to threaten public health or threaten to cause a nuisance. It's indisputable that the Sunrise Estates septic system poses a threat to the neighbors' drinking water quality and health as well as a nuisance to Born's Pond. The conclusion, the addition of two more homes at Sunrise Estates and thereby increasing the sewage load on its septic system cannot be done as of right, but only via an extension of the Sun Elite LLC special permit. If the board extends the permit, the town might receive a modest payment from the developer that could be used for affordable housing. Even in the unlikely event the town receives a full payment codified in the original permit, the payment would represent only 0.29% of the town's fiscal year 2021 budget. Although the advancement of affordable housing in Falmouth is a very laudable objective, there can be no valid justification of a permit extension that allows non-as-of-right development for such a relatively small payment, considering the resulting direct threat to public health into the water quality in Born's Pond and the clear contradiction of the intent of state environmental law. Accordingly, on behalf of the neighbors of Sunrise Estates, including those that are served by private wells, the undersigned respectively, but firmly request that the board not approve a further extension of the Sun Elite LLC special permit. Signed, Stephen Kramer.
And it should be noted that also there are five others. It says with full agreement by and on behalf of the Valley family, the Erickson family, the Thomas family, the Alsall family, the Thrasher family, and they're all on Crow Road. And you have seen a letter from Scott and Nancy Thrasher as well. That was part of our packet. I believe Mr. Thrasher had some comments the last time. So I think we've acknowledged all of the people who've written anything in. And remember, this is our decision. It's really not our any new information. It's decision time. Bob?
Thank you, Pat. Bob Amen, as you know, attorney for the property owner. I described Mr. Kramer's letter as speculative, unspecific, and unsubstantiated. And while it's long, it is not detailed. It is conclusory throughout. It talks about risk, risk, and more risk. Talks about harm as being inevitable. Uses words like poisonous. Assumes that there's a nuisance. But it's all conclusory. He refers to testing of a well in 2016 or subsequent. We don't have any figures. We don't have any groundwater studies. We don't know if whatever defect there might be is due to this septic system, this common septic system, or whether repairs that have been made to the septic system have completely addressed any concerns. What you do have and hasn't been read is a letter received today and submitted today from Holmes and McGrath, referred to by Pat, that says that the system is properly operating, that they inspected every quarter, that repairs have been made, that it was designed for additional flows, and that the system will operate better with additional flows. The septic system was approved originally and built to accommodate those lots. And to now, because of two lots intended for affordable housing benefits, to raise the issue of contamination of Born's Pond, which obviously is a concern of every property in a huge recharge area when we have a denitrification septic system which is working properly. Now, I've talked to Scott McGann, the health agent, this week. And he's aware of this. And if there is a nuisance, then he would take action, which is what the paragraph called regulatory issue in Mr. Kramer's letter says. But there's no action for him to take because the system is operating properly and is presumed to protect the public health. Though I don't think there's any issue, there's certainly no issue that's new. These same concerns have been being raised for years. And the system is being properly maintained, inspected, and operated. The neighborhood association has previously written to the town in support of this application because they want those two lots developed to share the expenses as was planned when people moved in. And we are in a position now, hopefully, to be able to pay the full $200,000 per lot. I'm not sure of that. But that's certainly a possibility that that could be done. The developer, just to go to a closing and be able to pay what has to be paid in order to give the deed, has had to get around $230,000 per lot. He owes the neighborhood association. He'll pay taxes, excise taxes, the $200,000, of course, broker's commission perhaps. He's going to owe taxes to the income taxes as a result of selling these lots. So for, you know, it's understandable why the lots have not been sold. The money wasn't been there. The money may be there now. We'll have to figure that out. We tried very hard to work out something over the last two years. More time. But to to make light of the affordable housing benefit from this is a significant mistake. But I think the issue of whether the septic system is working properly and protecting the public health is a health department issue. And what you have, instead of a lot of speculation that's in Mr. Kramer's letter, you have the reports, and I think it's 31 pages of inspection reports that I submitted with the letter that show that they're doing everything right with this system. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, we have a motion in front of us. Our options are say no to the whole thing, any extension. Or we can do one, two, or three-year extension if we choose. If we say no, then those lots just lie fallow. Nothing's done with them. Mr. Shamsi still owns them, but they can't be built on. This is my understanding of it. Tom, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Mr. Shamsi would still owe taxes on them. So I don't know what the board's opinion is on this. We can have the motion read and seconded, and then we can discuss it. We can change it. You wish to have discussion first as to what the parameters are that you have in front of us? Jim?
Do we have a motion ready to be read?
We do.
I think we should read it.
Okay. Paul?
Before getting to the motion, I'd like to address the issue of the length of time. Mr. Amen talked about how difficult it was to sell. Right now, we're in a very good climate for real estate. Three years from now, I don't know what it's going to be like. And if there is any incentive to get this thing moving, maybe it should be shortened to two years. But we've discussed this project so many times and so many issues. It would be nice to conclude this. And if the lots aren't being sold in this climate, and Mr. Fox can attest to that, I don't know. I don't know when they're going to be able to sell these lots. Right now is a prime time for real estate in the town of Falmouth. And I think we probably should get some encouragement to resolve this, sell the lots if that's what he wants to do.
Okay, then let me ask a question of the board before we read the motion, because we can change it before we read the motion. Do you agree with Paul's two years? Would you prefer having it reduced to one year or leave it as it is? As Paul said, you know, we're in a hot market now. John?
Would prefer to leave it at the three years.
You'd like to leave it at the three years?
Yeah, but not go beyond that.
Okay, anybody else? Pam?
This is the hottest market we have had in a very, very long time. And if there is no impetus to sell because he's got three years, I'm not willing to go three years. I think that that's foolish. It's been so many, many years. If people were all that interested in those lots, I think they would have purchased them. I don't know what Mr. Shamsi's been doing to try to market those lots. I don't want to lose the possibility of the money for affordable housing. We desperately need that here. But to just let this, I guarantee, if we go three years, they're going to come back and ask for another three years. Unless we give them some impetus to sell those lots, because obviously, they haven't felt any. Maybe that's not fair. I don't mean that to be negative, but they haven't done anything. So I would not, under any circumstances, go for three years. I might be kind. I might be kind and go for two. I'd rather see it one, because I think. because I think now is the time, and I think if we don't strike now while the iron is hot, so to speak, then we're not going to get them at all. That's what I'm concerned about.
Okay, so we've got three, two, and one right now as our druthers. I'd say myself, I would like one, but I would, I would agree with two and say absolutely no further extensions. Don't look for them. It either happens now within that two-year period. But I think if he can't do it in one year with this hot market, it's not going to do it. John?
I can agree with two, but no extension beyond that.
Two with no extension. Bob?
Is there anything that prevents Shamsi from putting houses on these and then selling them as houses?
Yes.
There, there is. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so.
I mean, I agree with Mike McGrath, who, what is it, 75 years he's been installing septic systems or something like that? That they, they do work better with, with more flow. I, I think, I, I think to have those lots developed is a, is a positive thing.
Okay, so how about if we get somebody to read the motion? And instead of putting three in there, put two in there. It's the fourth line down. Okay? Who would read that? Who would make the motion?
I'll make the motion, but I, I just found this rather confusing.
Yeah, so did I.
Is the extension considered a condition? Because, you know, the, the first line is, "The planning board was unable to modify or apply the repeal provision of the zoning bylaw." And then, let's see, "By the, by its terms, condition number one expired three from the," okay. Okay, "The zoning bylaw contained in section 240, 138, which allowed the payment of a fee for greater density in bonus lots, was repealed in 2010. It no longer exists." "Section 240, one, has been repealed and deleted from the bylaw, and is no longer within the authority of the planning board to apply it to new subdivision plans or modify conditions of previously approved subdivision plans." That, that's why I'm confused. I mean, if we have something telling us that we have, don't have the authority to do it, how can we do it?
Tom?
Yeah, those are findings from the original special permit, or from the, not say original, but from 2019. I'm going to call it special permit revival because the permit had expired. So those, those findings there are from the 2019 special permit extension.
Okay.
That's why they're in there.
So it's kind of like being able to follow a trail, Bob, in case somebody goes back and looks at what we've been doing.
Yeah, okay. Do you want me to read the motion?
Please.
"February 9, 2021 draft motion that the planning board was unable to modify or apply the repeal provisions of the zoning bylaw, section 240, 138 requested in the application of Falmouth Housing Trust to modify a special permit decision issued December 8, 2004 to Albert Shamsi trustee. The planning board, however, is granting a two-year extension filed January 23, 2019 from the filing of the original decision for an extension of condition number one of the December 2004 special permit for a density bonus under the condition described in the original decision. Findings, number one, by its terms, condition number one expired three years from the date of endorsement of the plan, and the previous extension expired two years from the date of endorsement. The lots were never developed and the conditions expired in 2007 or 2008. Two, the zoning bylaw contained a, in section 240, 138, which allowed the payment of a fee for greater density in bonus lots, was repealed in 2010 and no longer exists. Special permit findings, section 240, 138 has been repealed and deleted from the bylaw and is no longer within the authority of the planning board to apply it to new subdivision plans and modify conditions of previously approved subdivision plans."
And Tom, the rest of this on here really does not make sense, the motion and the vote of the original. That's why I think Bob didn't read further on that, correct, Bob?
Right, yeah.
Does anybody want to add in here, and can we add in here that this will, there will be no further extensions granted?
I think we should add that.
John?
I don't think it can be added, but if it comes back in two years, we'll know, not devoted.
We just won't even entertain it. Okay, so we have it as Bob read it with nothing else included to it. May I have a second for this motion?
Second.
Okay, so Bob and Pam. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, please show your vote by raising your hands, all in favor. Okay, so that's all seven of us in favor of it as a two-year extension. Thank you all. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Yes, Paul?
Just like to make a comment. We've had discussion tonight about the septic tank in this area. This is a treatment plant that's monitored by Holmes and McGrath and reports on it, so it's not a septic system. It is a treatment plant.
Yeah, it is. It's a, the kind of thing that we like to see in, in developments like this. Moving on. It's again a decision, the applicant is Sandwich Road Development LLC, special permit application along with a site plan review application to have a contractor's yard in the AGA district, including a contractor's yard building with floor area of 7,450 square feet and exterior contractor's yard, storage, parking, and assembly area of 39,900 square feet, and one detached single-family dwelling located at Zero Sandwich Road, map number 1701032000. And we do have a motion in front of us. We also, it should be noted, have another letter objecting to this, again, from the same person, and she makes the same points that she's made previously. I'm just acknowledging that we've received the letter, and I believe you all have seen it. Okay, so may I have somebody read the motion? Bob, are you too hoarse to read it?
I, I thought Paul raised his hand to read it.
Oh, did you, Paul? I'm sorry.
Question, but I can wait till the motion's read.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I guess that's me again.
Go for it.
And look at this.
You know, you want to shorten it? I mean, it's like.
That's okay. I, I didn't have any plans tonight other than this. "Motion that the planning board vote to approve the application of Sandwich Road Development LLC under Article 39, Site Plan Review, and grant a special permit pursuant to Section 240, 38K of the zoning bylaw to a site plan review construct a one-story, 50-foot by 149-foot by 23-foot by eight-and-a-half-foot-high steel building for a contractor's yard as well as a single-family residence located at Zero Sandwich Road, also shown on SS's map, section 17, map 17, section 01, parcel 032, lot 000, as depicted on the plan entitled 'Site Plan Contractor's Yard and House and Subsurface Sewage Disposal Systems Prepared for Sandwich Road Development LLC, Sandwich Road Hatchfield, Falmouth, Massachusetts, Sheets 1 through 6, prepared by BSS Design, dated November 10, 2020, Sheet 2 with latest revisions, date January 20, 2021, Sheet 3 with latest revision, date January 6, 2021, and Sheet 6 with latest revision, date of January 20, 2021, with scales as well as drainage calculations, with letters submitted by BSS Design, site distance plans and material building details for the proposed storage building with the following findings. The applicant, Sandwich Road LLC, is applying to the planning board for site plan review under section 240, 191, and a special permit under section 240, 38K, with the construction of one proposed steel storage building and one single-family residence. The proposed building will be a 50-foot by 149-foot by 23-foot by eight-and-a-half-high steel storage building with the eight overhead doors that will be used for a contractor's yard. The parcel is located in the agricultural AAGA zone. Lot coverage by structure is 3.73% and 20% is allowed. Coverage by structure, paving, and parking is 19.98% and 40% is allowed. The applicant has divided the 7.996-acre parcel to comply with specific, to comply with section 240, 38K. Four, contractor's yards cannot be located within 300 feet of a single-residence district or a dwelling existing or construction commencing as of April 1, 2000. The applicant has created Lot 1 containing 5.569 acres and Parcel A containing 2.403 acres, which is not a buildable lot. The applicant will disturb 1,854 square feet in the Water Resource Protection District for a 272-square-foot gravel driveway and vegetated shoulder. The applicant is requesting the height of the building to be 23 feet, eight and, eight-and-a-half inches, which is allowed per the Falmouth Zoning Bylaw, section 240, 70A, which states for agricultural uses only. Structures within agricultural districts may have a maximum height of 50 feet as measured from the base of the structure to the highest point. The applicant is not being required to install an IA system for the discretion, at the discretion of the planning board. The applicant has stated that the total proposed development on the 7.966-acre Lot 32 is to be only one four-bedroom house and the contractor's yard building with total Title V design wastewater flow of 840 gallons per day. The proposed wastewater flow is only 105.45 gallons per day per acre, less design flow than for two four-bedroom houses. A special permit granting authority shall grant a special permit only upon its written determination that, that the proposed use will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town in view of the particular characteristics of the site. Findings specific to section 240, 38K of the zoning bylaw. One, the locus resides in agricultural AAGA zoning district having 7.966 total acres and will be 5.569 acres after dividing the property, which satisfies the three-acre minimum. Two, the above referenced plan shows the proposed structure is 89.5 feet and the contractor's yard building will be 283 feet from Sandwich Road, which satisfy the minimum setbacks. The planning board finds these setbacks adequate to provide sufficient screening and buffer from the street or adjacent properties. Three, no contractor's yard shall be permitted in a water resource protection district, and the locus is not within said resource district. The applicant will only be disturbing 1,854 square feet of the Water Resource Protection District portion of the property for a 272-square-foot gravel driveway and vegetated shoulder. Four, the area set aside for contractor's yard cannot be located within 300 feet of a single-residence district nor within 300 feet of a dwelling existing or for which construction had commenced as of April 1, 2000. The above referenced plan shows compliance with these requirements. Five, no contractor's yard shall be permitted unless the planning board shall determine that operation of the contractor's yard, including traffic between the contractor's yard and arterial roadways such as Route 28 or Route 151, Thomas B. Landis Road, Sandwich Road, Obonso Road, or Blacksmith Shop Road will have no adverse impact on the neighborhood predominantly residential in character, and that the construction width and grades of the adjacent street and any other street providing access between the contractor's yard and any arterial roadway shall be sufficient for safe travel to and from the site by the vehicles to be stored. The planning board finds the proposed contractor's yard is located on Sandwich Road and arterial roadway. The proposed contractor's yard activity will be approximately 275 feet from the property line of a future house lot. Proposed Parcel A will allow buffering from houses to the east. There will be no adverse impact on the neighborhood predominantly residential in character or otherwise. The BSS design plan set includes a site distance exhibit showing that the site distances from the proposed driveway substantially exceed safety design standards. Six, the planning board shall specify hours of operation, the types and number of, or amount of vehicles, equipment, or supplies to be stored. What fabrication or subassembly shall be allowed, if any, and what accessory activities such as ordinary maintenance and minor repairs shall be allowed. No activities such as major repair work, painting, or engine cleaning shall be allowed. The planning board will condition this special permit accordingly. Therefore, given the above and, and the conditions to be imposed below, the planning board finds the application of site plan and special permit proposed to construct 150-foot, 149-foot by 23- and eight-and-a-half-inch prefab building for agricultural storage will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter and that the proposal will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town. Conditions, one, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary pursuant to section 240, 183B of the zoning bylaw. No permit for occupancy of the new construction shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval have been met. Two, the applicant shall obtain an approval, approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to start of construction. Three, the applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division and the driveway permit and shall have required to adhere to the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standards document, which is available on the engineering division's website, webpage. Four, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per section 99.1, a fixing of legible numbers required, time limit for compliance. Five, the regular non-emergency hours of operation shall be 6:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., Monday through Saturday for contractor's yard activities. Six, vehicles, equipment, and supplies that may be stored outside include up to dump, up to dump trucks, up to 76,000 pounds registered weights, registered weight capacity, registered trailers up to 20,000 pounds registered weight capacity, excavators, tractors, bobcats, and similar equipment, and assorted detachments such as plows. Other contracted vehicles such as vans, pickup, and utility trucks, up to 25 such vehicles may be stored in the contractor's yard. Seven, construction materials such as stone blocks, bricks, and steel framing will be stored on-site. Other construction equipment, tools, building supplies, appliances, and fixtures held for installation and other components will be stored generally within the main contractor's yard building. These items may include lumber, windows, roofing, and installation material, et cetera. Eight, there will be subassembling of building components such as wall sections and cabinetry. Nine, they will likely be within the main contractor's yard building small office areas for the contractor's yard operator and subcontractor tenants. Ten, ordinary maintenance and minor repairs of the vehicles and equipment would occur such as exterior washing and oil changes. Eleven, lighting and lighting glare will be kept on the property and not reflect adversely onto other properties. Twelve, the applicant shall add buffering, buffing to the wooded area where the trees appear to be sparse. Thirteen, all site construction within the project shall conform fully to the above referenced and approved site plan. Any change in the location of structures or any other site features such as cutting into the buffer shall require prior written approval of the planning board.
Thank you, Bob, and may I have a second for this? Jim?
I have a question. Wait, I'll wait till a second.
Well, I need a second first. Pam?
Second.
Okay. Paul, you had a question or a comment first, and then Jim?
Okay. My first comment is on page two, therefore, in the second line, 50-foot, 149-foot, there needs to be an X in there to show 50-foot wide, 139-long, and 823-feet high. And secondly, if I remember, we had discussion on the use of the housing. At one point, it was not going to be a work of housing, and another time was mentioned. It's probably going to be just a work of housing. I notice that is not in the motion here. I just raised a question. Is that something we want, we feel comfortable with, or should we address that issue?
I don't know. Tom, your opinion on that?
Yeah, when the question came up previously about would there be workers, would this be a sort of a live space for workers? I believe Bob Amen said that the house will comply with the requirements of a family per the zoning bylaw in Falmouth, which identifies what constitutes a family. So if the board wants to include a reference to, the, 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 the house will comply with the Falmouth zoning definition for occupancy, I think that's fine to include that.
What does the board say on that one? Yeah, Bob?
I I don't think we should have a requirement for who occupies it. In some cases, you may not find the right occupant for it, just may not be available. So I don't think we should condition the occupancy.
And Jim, you had a question?
I had an original question and it was just in the reading of the findings that I find unclear to me. It's describing this building as fifty feet by one forty nine by twenty three times eight and a half foot high.
Twenty three point eight type.
It doesn't say twenty three point eight. It says twenty three times eight and a half foot high. And he said that in the beginning too, you mentioned it twice. I can't see an eight and a half foot high building.
Yeah, when I when I read that, I'm I it didn't.
You fixed it.
It it didn't occur to me right away that it was twenty three feet, eight and a half inches.
Okay, well, that's what you should have said and I'm in agreement, thank you.
And I fixed it on the decision, it's in two years.
That's the only thing I found wrong was that little shift.
Okay. And Charlotte, you had something?
Yes, I don't think we should be adding more about what bylaws it comports to. It should be comporting with them all and we shouldn't have to say them. Look at the length of this. We are getting longer, they are getting murkier. This doesn't convey information to people who are listening because they can't take it in. And if they want that level of detail, it should be online where you can find it. I wish we would try to work on having clear, simple motions and only exceptional findings, not constantly repeating all of the regulars. These are just badly written and presented.
Okay, anybody else? John?
The clarification regarding the the four bedroom house, what the concern was, how many people are going to be living there? You could have, if it's workers only, you could have eight, eight different people, there are eight different vehicles. The applicant agreed that it's going to be similar to a single family home usage. And I would like to have something in the in the findings that indicate that. And as we all know, we can put in whatever we want, that doesn't mean what that's what's going to happen at some point in time. But I would just hate to, because of the neighbors, to give a blank check that anybody can live there, any amount of people and and then have a problem later on.
I agree.
Yeah, Tom?
There's nothing requiring the board to approve this special permit application this evening. I did want to touch base on a couple of things that we had talked about as well, if I may. The one of the things we had talked about in the original previously, and I'm trying to get back to the draft decision that I had here, thank you, was that subassemblies or components, condition number eight, that those would occur only within the building rather than have folks working in the yard, hammering and pounding things together. Under condition number eight, subassemblies of building components such as wall sections and cabinets were done within the building. Secondly, there is the item number twelve. The applicant shall add buffering to the wooded area where trees appear to be sparse. I did a site visit earlier this week with Tom Bunker and with the representative from Longfellow Christian. I didn't recognize under his hood with his sweatshirt and his mask on, sorry, Christian, for not recognizing you under your gear. So we took a walk out onto the site. We headed up towards the power line. And to take a look back to the site. Tom Bunker had gotten out there earlier and put an orange cone on the top of a twenty five foot surveyor's pole to take a look back at the site. I've got a picture I'll be happy to share with you to give you sort of a view shed. The point is that I don't know that it would be necessary to 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 screen anything at this point based on what we saw out in the site. Just let me give you a quick shot of the of the picture here, so. Get the chat out of the way here, so that looks like a picture of a snowy scene to you, I'm thinking.
Yep.
So this is a panorama that I shot on the at the site, basically about a hundred and eight degree. And this is looking down the hill. We're about maybe just off the power line easement at that point. So the site is pretty well wooded. This is winter when the oaks have lost most of their leaves and things like that. So it didn't appear to me as though there was an effective way to do any additional buffering on this site. But if the board wants to keep condition number fourteen or number twelve in, just in case, that's up to the board. Last thing.
Okay.
Last thing was, we also talked about a condition, there'd be no wood splitting or temporary sawmills on the site, which could be added as condition as well. I will note that when we were out at the site, the people next door have a, and I'm going to get the name it wrong, a rock crushing machine that's on their property and that makes a whole bunch of noise, but it's not on this particular site.
Okay, Jim?
I think we're ready to move this along without adding any more conditions. We have met with this in a long time and every week we'll just keep adding more.
Do you want to leave in the buffering?
No, I, well, whenever we have, whatever we, I could take out the buffering, but I'm also happy to move it. Once we got the decimal point moved, I think it's ready to go.
What about everybody else?
Ready to go.
Okay, Charlotte, Paul?
Yeah, I, I think, John makes a good point, I think the subassembly should be inside the building. That's the only change I would make.
Sure, but we can do that easily by just adding on to eight in the building.
Right.
Okay, so adding that to Bob's and I don't think either Bob or Pam, did you second it or seconded it? I don't remember.
It's been a long time, Pat.
I know.
I think the original motion was made by Bob and I seconded or vice versa.
You seconded it, okay, well, Bob made the motion, he read it.
So I'll move that we add the words within the building to condition number eight.
Okay.
That's good.
So that's how it is now and we'll say that Jim seconded it, okay? And you're agreeing with that, Jim, with the addition? Okay, are there any other questions or disputes on this as it was read? All right, may I see an approval by a show of hands, please? Okay, seven out of seven, thank you all. Now, on to planning board discussion. You all have a joint meeting, a proposed agenda. Okay? And if you would look at our part of it is the Davis Straits and under it, as Tom described it, the Davis Straits is the umbrella and under it are the ribs of the umbrella, we've got six ribs. And this is a Saturday, we're starting at nine AM, open session. I had emailed Megan and she agrees to handle it somewhat as a conversation, an informal conversational meeting. She agrees with me that we get a lot more done under that kind of format and I hope the board does agree with that too, so it's informal. I don't believe that I saw any kind of end time on there, starts at nine. So I don't know, I would assume we probably don't want to go longer than three hours, by then we're all getting kind of loopy. What I'd like to talk about tonight is the order of importance on those ribs. See what the board feels is most to least important that we discuss. And then our staff is going to get information out to us and I believe to the selectmen on these issues before we have a meeting so that we're more productive. So if I asked you, what do you think is, that's probably a little bit too open ended, but what do you think is most important on this? Remember, put it in context of discussion with the selectmen so that we can get their feedback on this and they can hear our thoughts and what we're doing, what the planning board's up to. Charlotte?
I think it might be helpful to group the things together differently. So that if we were to group together the design guidelines, site plan review, and then multifamily housing, because they're all very closely related. And then follow those with the ones that are less related. Transportation, coastal resiliency, and transfer development rights. And I don't know that we've discussed transfer development rights enough to actually have a conversation about it.
We haven't, I agree with you. I think if I were going to do it, I understand where Charlotte's coming from. But I know there's an awful lot having been done on coastal resiliency that the selectmen are involved with and we can probably have a very good conversation on that. And I don't know what they're doing or what their thoughts are on multifamily housing. I'd like to hear that because we're very involved in coming up with something right now.
But that's why we're having the conversation with them so that we can together on these issues.
Yeah, but see, I don't, I'm not sure, Charlotte, when we're talking about grouping things, that they all get the kind of look at that we are hoping to.
A suggestion.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand what you're saying. What about the rest of the board? Yes, Paul?
As I understand this agenda here, these items, these six items relate only to Davis Straits. Is that correct?
That's the way it's set up, but we can go a little further.
Committee for many of these other things that if we start going outside of Davis Straits, we'll never get finished.
I, right. I agree with you, that's why I was hoping to put it in some kind of an order too, because I'm not even sure we'll get finished, even if we're just relating to Davis Straits. Any other thoughts? Tom, what were you hoping to get out of tonight's discussion?
I just wanted to make sure the board sort of had an idea of what they wanted to talk about, much like we're doing here. And the staff and I have been attempting to put together a briefing book essentially with the components of Davis Straits and the other items that we've been talking about. We had a meeting today with with Union Studio and Horsley Witten on the Davis Straits as well. As we talked about before, while there, we don't have anybody who's presenting anything at the meeting. They're prepared to put something together for us if 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 so. So we just want to make sure that folks basically are familiar with the concept, what we're doing, moving on with that, and making sure we're at, you know, sort of a cohesive group going forward this. Because ideally, hopefully, and a lot of things fall by the wayside, we'd be bringing something on our schedule to town meeting in November twenty twenty one reform base code. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page moving forward with this from broad perspective.
Charlotte?
I have a question, Tom, I wonder, do you know if the if the Board of Selectmen have been briefed on the new zoning legislation? The new state zoning legislation that really changes the requirements for voting at town meetings?
They likely have not since it's just recently been passed and signed. Michaela and I talked about that earlier in the week after we saw your email, which I am not certain if it's been forwarded to the board members or not about the the new legislation.
Well, I didn't because as I understand it, I'm not allowed to forward something to all board members.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You and Pat.
Yeah, you you sent it to us and typically I would see that and send it to Michaela, to Melinda and say, please forward to the board. I don't know that it happened, the last couple of weeks have been pretty frantic here. So, but I don't know that they're familiar with 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 that recently passed legislation.
It's going to impact our work a great deal.
Charlotte, I don't believe I got anything from you in regard to that. I don't remember seeing anything from you.
My email, I didn't email it to anyone except Pat and Tom. And it's a link to a summary of the new legislation put out by the law review. And what it's saying is you don't need a two thirds vote. You just need a simple majority. But it's on, it's on a number of different issues so that you look across them and you really need to absorb it. It takes a while to take in the the, all the different factors that are affected by it.
So Michaela just texted me to say that that is part of the information package we put together that we're that we're ascribing in our, my my goal was to have that sort of packet put together for the board review prior to this meeting, but we just didn't get to it.
Well, do you think we should bring it up with the with the Board of Selectmen because it's important? Absolutely.
So.
Absolutely. And the question that I had for Michaela is oftentimes when a state law changes or passes, there's an opt in for the towns, whether a town wants to accept this provision of the by law to go simple majority versus two thirds. And I'm not, from what I understand, from Michaela, there's not an opt into that, but once again.
This is not an opt in.
Yeah.
Although there is some variance within it. That's why I'm saying you need to look at the whole thing. And so do you make it by right on several of the different things you get a choice? Is it going to be by right or not by right? They all, you still require a site plan review, da 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 da, there's a lot of, a lot of detail that's worth looking at.
Yeah, the legislation was about a hundred and fifty pages, we started looking at that. I scanned through to find out the parts that were specific to zoning changes and things like that to put together for both.
Okay, thanks, Tom, Jim?
Yeah, this law has been out there for three or four years, maybe five. This, it's up to the selectmen to get their advice and know what's going on. I mean, it's, this is nothing new. This this change from from three quarters or two thirds, excuse me, to a majority has been proposed several times. And if they don't know that it's passed, shame on them.
That's not helpful.
Well, it is, it's been going on for years. I I don't think we should move on.
Help them, we're all in this together.
Yeah, they should know, if they don't know, they shouldn't be selecting.
Well, there is, Jim, there isn't, there wasn't anything in the newspaper that I saw and I get a lot of my information from the newspaper.
I've seen it five times, maybe.
Maybe you have, a lot of other people haven't. So.
It's still something I think we should bring up.
Yeah, so we need to bring up the change in the state law. Jim?
Okay.
We need to bring.
Talk about things that don't mean anything if you want.
There are lots of us that are like a secret. And Brandon.
Let's keep talking.
We need to bring that up, I do believe, because the selectmen need to know how this affects our operation as a board.
And them.
Yes. Because they do some things too, absolutely, so. Okay, so Tom, you'll get the packet out.
Correct.
At some point.
Yeah, we we've been working on assembling it for about a week now.
Okay. Are, is your intent to give the packet also to the selectmen so we all have the same base information or not?
Absolutely, we like to be reading out of the same book.
Okay.
We don't say Bible because it's not the South, but up here we say the same book.
Okay.
I I moved up here from Atlanta, Jim, I'm allowed to say that.
Oh, no, you're not.
Uh, Paul?
Yeah. I have a question for Tom. Detail this is going to be in his packet. Because there's a lot of big issues here and I don't know if you're talking about the kind of packet that the Board Selectmen normally have over a hundred pages or whether it's something that's streamlined.
No, it's it's under a hundred pages, there's lots of pictures and bullet points.
Okay.
Thank you.
Charlotte?
Did we strike transfer development rights because we've never talked about it as a board?
I think we should, but it's all part, wait a minute, it's all part of Davis Straits to make it work. Jim?
If you have a long enough history, I know some of us have been, but I've been on the board for a long time. We've talked about development rights and Davis Straits for ten years, just because it's new to some people.
And Paul has also, I believe, we've talked about TDR for many years, but nothing's happened with it.
It's an integral part of moving forward.
On Davis Straits.
On Davis Straits.
Okay, well, well, Jim, this is the end of my fourth year on the board and we haven't really, as a board, discussed this in that period of time.
You're correct, we have not.
I know, but the but the proposal for Davis Straits Straits has been around long within four years. And in fact, it was really, on the local comprehensive plan, it was an integral part of how we're going to accomplish this. And I'm sorry, okay, you can start over again, but I just want to point it out, it's been clear to me that it's really important and we should go ahead.
Well, the selectmen also have to be involved in it. This is nothing that the planning board alone can do. Pam?
If you look up any number of other towns all over the state. If you look up any number of other towns all over the state that have had this on their record for years and years and years, and I think there's no reason why we have to confine it to Davis Straits. This is something that could be used all over town. And I know we're focusing on Davis Straits, but this is a larger issue than just Davis Straits. And I think we ought to bring it up to them, see if they've thought about it, if they've heard about it, if they're interested in it. But I think the planning board needs to move ahead townwide, not just Davis Straits.
We had always talked about it townwide. Tom?
Yeah, to his credit, Bob Leary has brought up TDR a couple of times since I've been here, and about how it needs to be revised. We've had conversations with town council about how our current bylaw isn't functioning the way it should. So it is one of those things, and if we go in order and we run low on time, something falls by the wayside, but you know, TDR is, is one of those planner widget tools that people love in my business that are difficult to implement in the real world. But they're frankly part of a potential strategy for retreat as a coastal mitigation strategy, coastal resiliency strategy, if necessary. So we have talked about it, but not in a, in a pinpointed sort of way, other than the need we have for having a better one.
So, Tom, would you be in line with Charlotte's recommending that we decide that we put together design guidelines, multifamily housing, and site plan review, and try to kind of work those together? Do you see them as working together?
I have more of a feeling that this is going to be a bit more of an organic discussion. People are going to say, transportation, we clicked that off, let's move on to. I think the discussion is going to be considerably more organic on those A, B, C, D, E, and F's, my take.
That was my point with Megan in my email to her, have it more of a conversational nature. So, Jim?
The transfer of development rights is part of our existing bylaw, it happens all the time now. What we're talking about is modifying it. I don't know if everybody on the board knows that this happens all the time, that the transfer of development rights is in place, and it happens. And if I want to, I could quote you specific examples in the last five years where it's been used. We're trying to say, oh, okay, let's use it on Davis Straits. But it, it's not new to anybody. It may be new to some of the members of the planning board, but this happens all the time. There's specific examples that it happens. I can give you, I can give you lots and everything on it, but it's, it happens. And it is rare, but it needs to be discussed.
Well, we're not x-ing it out.
I thought we were, I thought we were taking it out, and that's the part I was worried about.
No, 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 as Tom said, it's, rather than ranking it, he suspects this is going to be more of an organic discussion.
If it's, as long as it's in there, I'm okay, but it's important, don't get rid of it.
Yeah, okay. And you see that the selectmen want to discuss the location of the, the concept and the location of the new fire station. So they're getting the planning board's input on that, which I think is a very good thing.
Yeah, the board's likely to see an A and R to split off a lot for a fire station at their perhaps March 9th meeting if the documents are prepared by that point.
Okay. Paul?
I don't think we've seen anything except of what's in the paper about the potential locations for this, so I don't know how we're going to discuss this in detail.
I don't either.
There's no real information that I've seen so far, except I read in the enterprise.
What's in the enterprise, yep, Tom?
I mentioned a briefing book. So Julian, Peter McConerty, the fire chief, and I have been talking about this. So we will have those, those lot locations, those conceptual plans and things like that included in the book. I just need to confer with Julian to make sure that we're at the final, excuse me, the final versions of those documents before putting them in there.
Okay, thank you. Are we done with this? So we know kind of a little bit like where we're going on Saturday's meeting? And I've asked Tom to provide an easy click like we get for tonight's meeting, so we can get into it very readily. Yes, Paul?
What is number three? Other matters of joint concern, what is, what's anticipated there? I mean, are we going to be at their?
I have no clue, I think that's a catch-all that we probably aren't going to use. Should we eliminate it, Tom suggests that we eliminate it or not? Or is this another, okay, it's a catch-all, other matters of joint concern that we're going to see you at our next joint meeting about?
It's not unusual for someone's agenda in many towns to have matters unanticipated by the chair in their agenda. This may be along that line of somebody wants to take a flyer on something. I don't, I don't know, this is, you know, what the selectmen have put together for us. I don't think it's particularly problematic myself.
Charlotte?
Different question about the meeting. This meeting, I assume, is open to the public?
Open to the Zoom public, yes, ma'am.
Zoom, yeah, Zoom public. And so how will it be advertised so people know about it?
Well, we're certainly talking about it tonight. It will be posted on both of the websites for the planning board and for the select board. We've talked with IT today about making sure we've got a person there to deal with the meeting, and also talk with the FCT to make sure they've got someone covering the meeting, so it's televised.
Thank you. And will you be sending out like a final sort of agenda or whatever?
It's, it's likely going to look an awful lot like what we've been talking about.
Remember, we're Tuesday, and.
A lot like that thing.
When did you send that out, by the way?
Oh.
Think that Melinda had sent it out earlier in the week. Paul had asked about it, because he, well, I shouldn't say a member asked about it, but, but his name was Paul, about, I couldn't find my copy of the agenda, so I hit the send key again this afternoon. But Melinda had sent it out previously with the packets.
Yeah, it came through, Pam, both times. So I don't know where yours disappeared to.
Heaven only knows.
Paul?
I'd sure like to see an end time on the agenda.
Well, let me say this, there is a birthday party for a veteran who may be 99, maybe 100 on Saturday. I think it's at 1:00. The selectmen's meeting, they were all talking about, oh, yes, I will be there at the meeting. Julian reminded them that they had a joint meeting with the planning board, and they all thought, I certainly hope we're done by 1:00, so we can go to the Zoom party for the old, the most esteemed, honored veteran. So if we're there at 1:00, we're raining on somebody's birthday cake.
Yeah, I think it will go no later than 12:30, and most likely 12:00, we call it quits.
I would think.
Okay. Somebody can move adjournment if you're getting sick and tired of it, too. Paul?
Who's bringing the?
Donuts?
John Druley is sending donuts to everyone's house for the meeting, he's already committed to that, I believe.
Thank you, John, that's so sweet of you.
I can make them myself, you're really going to like them.
Who's the veteran that's turning 100? We should say who is his name.
I'd have to go back and look at the selectmen's agenda from the other day, but if you got a couple of minutes, I'll go look it up.
It's okay, we, we'll move on, we'll hear about it when we have the meeting.
Well, we can also have it at the joint meeting, so we can all wish him a happy birthday, too.
That's what we should bring it up then, yes.
Okay, all right. I'm assuming there are no committee reports? I've not been told of anybody wishing to make a committee report, is that correct? Nobody, okay. General correspondence, I don't have any, other than that which came in for specific projects that we were voting on tonight. Future agenda items, anybody want to bring anything up on that? Okay? So our, our next meeting is this Saturday, joint meeting at 9:00, and it will be televised. And then our next meeting is February 23rd, and we have the zoning articles for the spring 2021 town meeting. Paul?
I think the future agenda items should be a recap of whatever happens on Saturday.
Well, we could do that. Okay, recap of.
That could be in the discussion section.
Yeah, I think, I think it should be, because again, not many people will probably be watching it, and I think they deserve to know what we discussed.
Yeah.
Okay, Paul, Tom?
Samuel N. Johnson is celebrating his 100th birthday on Saturday.
Wow.
Samuel N. Johnson.
Thank you.
Great.
I had you something right tonight.
Thanks for looking that up, okay. So it is currently 7:49, and if nobody has any objection, may I bang my fist down?
Move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Tom, would you send that to me?